Welcome to Wednesday Bible Study. It's a joy to share God's Word with you. Tonight, we're beginning a study through the book of Philippians, and I'm teaching at the ancient ruins of Philippi. Well, at least virtually. Now, Paul loved the church of Philippi, and he wrote this epistle to them while he was in prison at Rome. Sixteen times, he referenced the word "joy." Now, I entitled this series, "Joy in Troubling Times." You see, we are living in troubling times indeed. I mean, the coronavirus pandemic has turned our world upside down. I mean, there are escalating health troubles, and financial troubles, and relational troubles, and well, on and on we could go. You know, troubling times are not new to followers of Christ. Christians have been living in troubling circumstances since the time of our Lord. Troubling times leads people asking the question, "Where is God?" Now, there are three possible answers to this question. First, God doesn't care about us. Now, we know that's not true, because He cared enough to send Jesus to earth to die on the cross for our sins. The second possible answer is, well, God doesn't control the earth. Now, we also know this isn't true, because biblical prophecies always come true, and history is moving toward God's prophetic end. Now, the third possible answer to this question, God is fulfilling an eternal plan, and this is the biblical answer to the question, "Where is God?" He has an eternal plan that He is unfolding. Now, this reality leads us to yet another question. How does God desire us to live in such troubling times? Now, the New Testament book of Philippians provides great answers. So, let me give a brief background to help us understand this amazing book of Philippians. Now, Paul was in prison at Rome when he wrote this letter. His imprisonment began in Jerusalem. He was then moved to Caesarea, and finally, he was transported to Rome. Now, when in Jerusalem, Paul had hoped his circumstances would have changed for the better, but they didn't. When in Caesarea, Paul had hoped that his circumstances would have improved for the better, but they didn't. And while in Rome, Paul encountered escalating negative circumstances. And when writing this letter from Rome, Paul had lived in prison for over two years, and we would certainly think of those as troubling circumstances. All of us today are faced with troubling circumstances. I mean, we're followers of Christ, and the Lord has chosen not to remove the negative circumstances of the coronavirus and this incredible pandemic that we're experiencing. Now, we want to live abundant lives. That's the promise of the Lord Jesus, but we are restrained by the troubling circumstances. So, let me ask you, how are we to live Christian lives in times such as these? Now, the book of Philippians holds the key. So, this evening, we're going to begin an eight-week study on how we can have joy in troubling times. Now, verses one through two, we are told that God's gifts give us joy. You see, there is joy in knowing, first of all, who's in charge. Look at chapter one of Philippians. Turn there if you haven't already. Philippians, chapter one, and let's begin with verse one. We're going to go verse by verse through this incredible epistle. Philippians, chapter one, verse one. "Paul and Timothy, bond servants of Christ Jesus." Now, let's stop there for a moment. You see, Paul identified himself and Timothy, his associate, as bond servants. Now, we simply know that these were slaves. Paul and Timothy were slaves of Jesus Christ. Now, in our culture, appropriately so, we think of the term slave as a designation that's demeaning and dehumanizing, and of course, that's the case. But when Jesus is your master, it's exhilarating to be his slave. When Jesus is your master, it's liberating for him to be a slave. And that's the case for two amazing realities. Let's look at them real quickly. First of all, it means that I'm not in charge. I mean, if I'm a slave, I'm certainly not in charge. You see, I don't have to figure out this coronavirus. I don't have to figure out the economy. I don't have to figure out how I'm going to provide for myself and my family, and for those I love and care for. You see, that's God's job. He's the master. I'm the slave. And brothers and sisters, that's liberating. Second, it reminds us that Jesus is indeed in charge. You see, my troubles don't seem so insurmountable knowing that Jesus is in charge. There is joy in knowing He's in charge. There's also joy in having His amazing gifts. Let's pick up where we left off in verse one, and let's finish verse one and verse two. "To all the saints in Christ Jesus who are in Philippi, including the overseers and deacons," if you will, the pastors and deacons, the two ancient officers of the church. Verse two says, "grace to you and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ." Now, first of all, I want you to see that God makes us saints. Now, in troubling times, we often feel like we're failures. In fact, sometimes, we ask ourselves, you know, "Have I done something, Lord, to deserve this?" Now, I remind you that Paul was not in prison for crimes he committed. His troubling times came because he was a faithful witness of Jesus Christ. So, it doesn't mean you've done wrong. It perhaps means that God wants to get your attention, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we are being corrected. Some may be. But I want you to look carefully at this word "saint." The word "saint" means holy one. You are a saint. That's a gift God has given you. You are a holy one. You haven't earned that on your own behavior, your own deeds. It is a gift God has given you through Jesus. You see, it also means that you are set aside for God's purpose. Now, to me, this is amazing. You're talking about joy. This rules my life. You see, I should have joy knowing that God has given me His holiness, and when He sees me, He sees me as a holy one, and He has also set me apart for an eternal godly purpose. You see, my brothers and sisters, you have a reason to live. Now, Paul then gives a blessing that was common in his letters. In verse two, he mentions grace and peace. Now, grace and peace that Paul spoke of here was only available through, look what it says in verse two, "God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ." You see, this is a supernatural gift giving. You see, God's grace and peace, only given by God Himself, enables us to experience joy even though we're, are living amidst troubling times. You see, living a life of grace and peace doesn't depend on the stock market. It doesn't depend on your status as an employer. You see, grace and peace are God's gifts given to our hearts and to our lives. So, let's summarize verses one and two thus far. You see, Paul gives us good reason to live lives of joy even in troubling times. Why? Because His gifts have been so graciously given to us. What are those gifts again? The gifts of being a saint? The gifts of His grace? The gifts of His peace? His incredible qualities? His incredible blessings on our life? You see, His gifts, so graciously given to us, are perfect sources of joy. So, how can we have joy in amidst troubling times? Well, first of all, we understand that God's gifts are very gracious and generous, and certainly, they give us joy. Second, in verses three through 11, we'll learn that God's people gives you joy. You see, that's His will. That's His intent. God has ordained Christ followers to encourage one another. Now, encouragement in troubling time is one of God's greatest sources of joy for your life and for mine. You see, the Philippian Christ followers would have been strengthened by Paul's words of encouragement. Look at verse three. "I thank my God in all my remembrance of you." Now, you imagine Paul sharing those words, and here you are in this ancient church, and Paul is saying, "You know, I just sang 'God' when I remember you." You're talking about encouragement, and encouragement gives way to joy. Now, look at verse four. "Paul in return received encouragement by the faithfulness of the Philippian followers." Look at verse four. "Always offering prayer with joy in my prayer for you all." You see, Paul not only received joy, he gave joy. Now, some Christ followers prefer to give encouragement rather than receive it, while other believers prefer to receive encouragement rather than to give it. So, let me ask you, which describes you? What tendency do you have? Now, in troubling times like these, I have a suggestion for us. Let's maximize Christian joy, and let's do both. Let's both give encouragement and receive encouragement from our brothers and sisters in Christ, and we will experience joy in troubling times. Now, Christ followers in verses three through 11 are provided seven types of encouragement in troubling times. Now, I want you to look at these. In fact, if you're taking notes, I want you to record these. I think they'll be a blessing to you as you review them. First of all, they affirm you. Let's read verse three once again. "I thank my God in all my remembrance of you." You see, we can make it in troubling times because Christ followers affirm us. You see, God has purposed for affirmation to come to us through one another. You know, sometimes, we just need a human being to breathe life, words of truth in us, and to affirm us, and they can be spokespersons for the Lord Himself, and oh, the encouragement and the joy that comes in our lives. Number two, they think of you. Now, once again, I'm going to reference verse three. I know we've read it twice already, but I'm going to do it yet once more. "I thank my God in all my remembrance of you." You see, we can make it in troubling times because we're not forgotten. You see, Christ followers have us on their minds. Not only are we on Christ's mind, which is perhaps more preeminent, but we have one another on our minds. You know, I am just absolutely amazed and so incredibly appreciative of the reports that I'm hearing of the Liberty family, how you are phoning one another and encouraging one another, calling one another, reaching out to one another. I mean, it just brings about this enormous form of encouragement. How can we help from living in joy with such wonderful sincere thoughts of care? Well, so it is, and it's been that way. It's God's will. It's His plan to help you make it in troubling times. Now, number three, let's continue the list of seven. "They pray for you." Look at verse four. "Always offering prayer with joy in my every prayer for you all." You see, we can make it because Christ followers intercede on our behalf. I mean, folks pray for us. One of the greatest joys that I have is being pastor is to hear folks say, "Pastor, I'm praying for you." You know, I've had several phone me and just to encourage me and to speak words of encouragement in my life. I want you to know, when people pray for you, I mean, it'll change your life. It'll set your direction for the day. Now, they don't just do it once. I mean, it's not just a check off. Okay, pray for you today. Check, you're done. Now, Paul says here that they "always..." Look at the word in four. "Always offering prayer in my every prayer for you all." I mean, Paul was committed to it. The believers at Philippi were committed to it, and I believe you're committed to it, that we pray radical prayers. We pray about everything, and we don't give up. Now, let's go to number four. "They serve with you." Read verse five with me. "In view of your participation in the gospel from the first day until now." You see, we can make it because we don't serve alone. You see, we draw strength by serving alongside other followers of Christ. You see, I'm not serving alone. You're not serving alone. You're not bearing your burdens alone. You see, you're not advancing the gospel alone. We get to serve together, and oh, how rich and how encouraging it is to have brothers and sisters that show up and serve alongside us. Now, number five. "They grow with you." Look at verse six. Verse six. "For I am confident of this very thing, that he who began a good work in you will perfect it until the day of Christ Jesus." You see, God is working a good work in all of our lives, and He's not only doing it in your life and in my life. He's doing it in our lives. You see, we can make it in difficult times because we don't have to figure things out alone. We get to serve with the aid and the assistance of other followers of Christ. I mean, that's a joyful, encouraging concept. We're not pulling to load ourselves, and we're growing in Christ with one another. As iron sharpens iron, we're there for one another, with one another. And oh, the joy that brings. Number six. "They love you," verses seven through nine. Boy, I love these verses. Listen carefully as I read. Follow along with me. "For it is only right for me to feel this way about you all, because I have you in my heart, since both in my imprisonment and in the defense and confirmation of the gospel, you all are partakers of grace with me. For God is my witness, how I long for you with all the affection of Christ Jesus. And this I pray, that your love may abound still more and more in real knowledge and all discernment." Boy, can you just feel the passion of Paul's words here? You see, we can make it in difficult troubling times because of the affection that we have in Christ. And you say, "Well, how do we experience that affection?" Well, there's numerous ways. But here, He is speaking of, we experience it through one another. You see, I experience the love of Christ through you. Now, do I receive the love of Christ directly? Of course I do. His Holy Spirit is there with us. He affirms us. He cares for us. He supplies for us. He guides us, et cetera. Of course, the love of Christ directly comes in our lives. But what Paul is speaking of here is that there is an enormous measure of encouragement when we understand that we love one another, and the love of Christ is in us, and we share His love with other followers of Jesus. Man, we just love one another. That's awesome. Finally, number seven. "They live the Christ life with you," verses 10 and 11. "so that you may prove the things that are excellent, in order to be sincere and blameless until the day of Christ, having been filled with the fruit of righteousness which comes through Jesus Christ to the glory and praise of God." You see, we can make it because we don't live the Christian life alone. You see, there are other believers that are on the same journey with us. Not only are there some, all of us share the same journey of faith. Now, Paul specifically here mentions three components of the Christian journey, and let's just take note of them. Number one, we approve what is excellent. I mean, we together understand that there is a excellent way. There is a way of life. There is a course, a direction, in which our Lord desires us to live, and the road which gives us encouragement and joy, and we live this out in His excellence. He mentioned, secondly, that we live a sincere and blameless life. Now, how do we do that? Well, not on our own behavior, right? Not just our own choices. We have to make the right choices. But you see, we're all walking this sincere, blameless life before Christ. He lives in us. His righteousness is in us, and we then live a blameless life as a result of this power and the strength of Christ in us. And the third, He mentions, "And we live full of the fruit of righteousness." The fruit of righteousness? This incredible life of the narrow path? This life called, that we are called to live in Christ? It was portrayed in the Sermon on the Mount. We live in this fruit of righteousness. What incredible sources of joy! Oh, praise the Lord. Now, I'd like for us to make three quick applications of verses one through 11 in chapter one of Philippians. First of all, we must live like God is in charge. Now, this may seem a little elementary, but you see, His sovereignty must be more than Christian academia. You see, we must put His sovereignty into practice. Now, so, how do we do that? I thought it was just a concept. No, no. No, we put it in practice. How do we do that? By surrendering to His lordship and to His control. Now, this must be intentional church. You see, we are conditioned to be strong and taking care of ourselves, but that's not surrender to His lordship and His sovereignty. You see, we live in His strength, in His power. We get up in the morning, and we say, "Lord, I'm going to need Your strength today. I'm facing issues in my family. I'm going to need You to be my Lord today. I'm facing a decision, oh Lord, and I'm calling on You, you know, to give me Your strength and Your wisdom and Your direction. And God, I'm absolutely surrendering my need for employment to You, and I will do what I can do. But God, ultimately, it's in Your hands. I'm committing my life to Your lordship. You are sovereign over me." We got to live that way. We just can't sing the songs of sovereignty. We can't just simply state words of sovereignty. We must live it out very practically. Second. "Thank Him for life's blessings while fully embracing His greater gifts." Now, God gives us many earthly blessings. I mean, we could list quite a roll call here. Our homes are a blessing, right? Our vehicles, that He enables us to travel in, certainly are blessings. Our jobs are blessings. I mean, we could go on and on, right? We have a lot of earthly blessings, and I think we all are grateful, and we should give Him thanks. It's appropriate. It's the right thing to do to give the Lord thanks. But listen carefully. The greatest gifts are much more glorious and even more necessary. See, God has even greater gifts than His earthly blessings. Now, Paul specifically mentions three in the first 11 verses, specifically in verses one and two. We reviewed them a moment ago. Sainthood, grace, and peace, right? We are saints, and we have His grace. We have His peace. They're in us, and we get to live these incredible blessings and gifts out in our lives. Listen, I get to live like I'm a saint. Now, it doesn't mean I'm arrogant. Doesn't mean that I have a halo that circles my head as portrayed in a lot of medieval Renaissance art. But what it means is that I'm set aside, and I've got a purpose, and I get to live that way. And I've got His grace. I don't live by the law. And I've got His peace. And there is a peace that passes all understanding, and I receive those gifts, and I'm living in those gifts, and it makes all the difference in my life, and makes all the difference in your life. And if you want to live a life of joy, especially amidst these troubling times, you will embrace these incredible gifts. You'll give thanks for His blessings, but you'll even more so embrace those incredible, incredible, great, glorious gifts. Sainthood, peace, and grace. Now, the third application today, and our final one, be an encouragement to others. You see, God has called you to encourage others. Now, some folks are very natural in their encouragement abilities. Others of us have to try a little bit more intentionally, but it's not the issue. The issue is encourage folks. You see, it is the will of God. It's the plan of God. It is what God has given us to do, to bring comfort and to bring encouragement and to bring joy in a life of others. We are participants with God and bringing about a life full of joy. Now, you might be thinking, "Preacher, I'm not experiencing joy from other believers." And no doubt, there are some of you listening and studying with us this evening that that's true for. But here's what I've come to believe and I have observed in my years of being pastor, and that is, if you are not receiving strength through the encouragement of others, most likely, you're not giving the gift of encouragement to others. You see, if you'll give encouragement to others, they'll reciprocate. Not everyone, but many will strengthen you and encourage you and feel your need for joy. Be an encourager. Be an encourager. Use the arms of the Lord Jesus and wrap around others. Show them that you care. Call them on the phone. Lift them up with your words and deeds, and God will greatly bless you with His great gift of joy. Well, it's been a great privilege to share the first 11 verses with you out of this wonderful book of Philippians, and we'll continue to study next week. And I hope you join us as we learn how God turns troubling times into something great and as a source for joy. Now, this is Holy Week. What a special time in the church calendar. We normally have a week filled with very meaningful opportunities of worship and fellowship and study. Well, those have been reduced as a result of the pandemic. But let me ask you to join us this Friday at noon. I'll be sharing a study with you regarding the passion of the Lord Jesus, how He died on Calvary, and how He gave His life as a ransom for your sins and mine. I'll be teaching from Israel. Yeah, again, virtually. But you will see Galatia. You will see the tomb. And I'm going to take you to some incredible sites where you'll be able to better understand and identify with this amazing, amazing New Testament message of Jesus' death, burial, and resurrection this Friday at noon on Facebook and YouTube. Now, don't forget to join us for Easter services. We're going to have a drive-in sunrise service. It begins at 7:30 in the morning, so you'll have to get up early. But the good news is, you don't have to dress up because you'll be driving into the church parking lot, and you will not get out of your car. We're all just kind of hovering in our own vehicles, and you'll drive in. We'll have some assistance that will enable you to park where you should, so you'll be able to participate. It's also going to be a communion service. Typically, we have a Passover Seder. We've done that for years here, but not this week. So, we'll be having communion. Now, you'll need to bring your own communion elements. If you don't have unleavened bread, then bring a salting cracker with you and try to get grape juice. But if you can't, bring juice or any kind of beverage. Now, I realize that's not normally what we use, but you know, these are just different times that we're in, aren't they? We're going to have a wonderful service this Easter, sunrise. Rain or shine, 7:30, we'll be here. You won't get out of your vehicles. You won't touch anyone, and I trust you'll find the service very meaningful. Now, following our sunrise service, you'll be driving back home, and there, you can participate in small group Bible study. We have now five small group Bible study classes that are available to you online. They're Zoom-provided conferences, and these teachers are Jerry Barrington, Jackie Murkison, Max Mathis, Barbara Green, and Terry New. So, call one of these five and ask them to invite you to join along in one of their Bible studies. Now, you may be thinking, "Well, you know, I don't do that. I'm not real comfortable with trying to configure a video conference out." Well, then, just use your phone. You can actually, just by your phone, call in and participate in small group Bible study. Now, following small group Bible study, resurrection worship will be at 10:45 on Facebook and YouTube. I'm so excited what the Lord has for us to share with you. You're going to enjoy the worship and the singing and the praising, and I trust the word of God as well. So, make sure you... So make sure you tune in on Facebook and YouTube, 10:45 this Sunday morning on Easter as we celebrate the anniversary of the glorious event that ever happened on the earth. Well, I love you. I thank the Lord for you. And I want to tell you thank you because you're loving, and you're caring, and you're giving. You see, you study, and you worship, and you're in this thing. You're radical followers even in difficult, troubling times like these. And you're redeeming the times. Many of you are. So let me encourage every single one of us, let's redeem these times. Let's make the very best out of what circumstances that we're placed in. Now, I want to close with a prayer, and I'm going to ask God just to bless your life. Join me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for my brothers and sisters. Thank you, Lord, for their love for you and their love for the Word. Lord, they want to learn. They want to grow, Lord. And then, how you enable us to have joy and abundant life all the time. And if Paul could have abundant life in a Roman prison, we can have abundant life in a virus pandemic. So God, thank you for your Word. Thank you for this great New Testament book of Philippians. Give us understanding and help us to practice and be doers of the Word and not hearers only, oh Lord. Now, Father, I pray in Jesus' name, you'd keep my brothers and sisters safe from the virus. I ask that because you enable me and allow us to make requests in your throne room and make them boldly, and I'm doing that. So God, please keep them safe. Well, we understand you've got a will and a plan, and you're unfolding it in every single life, individually and collectively. So I pray, oh God, that we cry out and call out to you in repentance. I pray that the nations of the world, the peoples of the world, oh God, all across this globe, we call and cry out to you in repentance and seek your face as never before, so that you would heal our land. Now, bless my brothers and sisters. Fill them, oh God, with your Holy Spirit, especially during this Holy Week. And we give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. God bless you.